I want to call this meeting to order. Um, this is a work session from Monday, November ninth, two thousand and twenty. We'll call the role for first item. Mr. Burse.
President.
Mr. Barnard.
Present.
Mr. Carter.
Present.
Chairman Brown.
Present.
Present, and the chair is present. All accounted for, Mr. Manager. I'd like to call on Chief D. Meadows to give invocation and pledge allegiance. Commissioner Barnard, please stand.
If you would, let us pray. Father, we thank you for your goodness, your grace, and your mercy. Father, we thank you for everything that you provide for us. Lord, we pray that as we stand here today, that everything that we would say and we would do would be pleasing to you. And Father, first and foremost, we thank you for your son, Jesus Christ, who died on the cross for each and every one of our sins. Now, Father, I pray that you bless this community. I pray that you bless this commission for Ms. Brown that is sick. Father, I pray that you reach down and touch her. For Mr. Carter, Lord, I pray you continue to touch his body. Father, your word says that by the stripes of Jesus, we are healed. So, Lord, we stand for agreement for our friends. Now, Lord, we bless this meeting in Christ's name, I pray. Amen.
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 I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
To the republic.
Stand.
One nation.
One God. In the visual with liberty and justice for all.
Justice for all.
Thank you. First item, number four on the agenda is a guest speaker, Mr. Russell Lee. Come forward, please.
I ain't no guest speaker. I'm not supposed to be able to talk about that canal y'all dug out there in ninety-four.
Russell, how about I give a name and address for the minutes? That's, we have to have that.
You want a mailing address or a street address?
It doesn't matter.
Russell H. Lee, P.O. Box nine oh four, Wake Grove, Georgia.
Thank you.
Okay. Can I ask the county attorney a question?
What's the question? Well, we're here, you're here to talk to us.
Yeah, yeah, I know it, but she's representing Ware County, ain't she?
Right, just address us and then we'll, we'll see.
Okay. Well, what I'd like to know is, does she live and pay taxes in Ware County?
That has nothing to do with what we're talking about.
It does have something to do with it.
No, she's hired, that farm is hired by this commission. Doesn't matter where they come from, that's it.
Yeah.
Her address doesn't matter.
But she don't know the situation, and she's never been to my place.
Has nothing to do with it.
And she don't pay taxes in Ware County.
What's the problem? It doesn't matter where she lives.
She ought to have to pay taxes in Ware County if she's going to be paid by the taxpayers.
All right, go ahead and tell us what the, what the complaint is this time.
Okay, it's the same thing, Mr. Pope, as I brought before the commission in ninety-four. You was right here on it.
Right.
You didn't do nothing about it then, and you didn't do nothing about it the last time I was here. Of course, that was about the fence, and y'all have made a ruling on that.
Right, we've already voted on the fence.
The fence is up, and I paid for it. That ain't cost Ware County a dime. But I'm here about the agreement that Ware County made with me in ninety-four that they would maintain that ditch, and they've never done it. They've never done a thing out there. And I want to know if the commission would be willing to do the right thing and rock it. Mr. Barnard mentioned that the last time I was here, you know, about putting some rock or something there to stop the erosion. And that, that's what they said they would do in ninety-four.
I don't remember saying that we would rock any ditch.
You, it says right here that they will also correct any erosion problem that might occur.
Right. I don't think the county's going to have any money to landscape a ditch. But they can look at it, but I won't think you'll get that done, put rocks in the ditch.
I'm not talking about in the ditch, Mr. Pope. I'm talking about on the bank to prevent the erosion. That's what I'm talking about. I don't want rock in the ditch. Water's got to go down here, and I'm talking about on the bank to stop it from eroding my new fence. That, that's what happened to the first one. They dug all the dirt away from it, and if there's no rock put there on the bank, then it's going to erode, continue to erode. And that's what I'm asked in the commission to do. Mr. Barnard mentioned that at the last meeting, you know, with, about the rock, so.
I'm fair sure this commission will follow the recommendations of the Public Works Director to eliminate an erosion problem if that is a problem. Have y'all looked at this, Scott, or is this?
Yes, sir. I had recent pictures made of it, but it's, it depends if that's what you want to do. I can get with the Public Works Director, and we can assess it and figure out what needs to be done and pass it back to y'all.
What's the wish of the commission?
Well, did we really make a, a signed statement that we would do something about the erosion?
No, that we would maintain the ditch, just like any other ditch in the county. That's all that letter says.
Well, if we could, we, yeah, but if we do have a bad erosion problem, normally you would put a few rock, like maybe in the slope or something of that nature to either what we call a, a energy dissipator. I know, yes. But that's what they call it in the specifications. And if that's the case, our, manager should get out there with the, with the, or maybe have the, Public Works Director to go out there and see if the thing is actually necessary and just get the job done. If that's the case, if it's not the case, we're not after going out there and, and just maintaining ditches that people are not doing their own, their own thing, so.
Mr. Carter?
Yes, sir.
Did you ever read this letter?
Yes, sir, I read the letter.
It says here that we will also correct any erosion problem that might occur along the ditch. Ware, Ware County will also maintain and mow the ditch. They've, Ware County has never done either one of them things, see? That's, that's.
Well, I don't, I don't expect Ware County to do mine, and I don't expect Ware County to do yours. I expect, though, that we, we as neighbors and friends, that we would maintain our areas like we should. I, one thing I despise is people that, that just simply will not keep their yards and their grounds up. And I try to do mine, or my son-in-law does, and.
Well, I keep mine up, too. You told me you was going to ride out there and look at that. Did you ever go?
No, sir, I haven't been able.
Yeah, well, I assure you, I keep my place up, and that's the reason, if I didn't care, I wouldn't be here about this a half a dozen times. That's the reason I'm here, is because I care.
Yeah.
But I, I would appreciate you going and looking.
I will, when I can.
Mr. Barnard said he went, but it was raining, and he wasn't able to, he wasn't able to see it, and so I reckon it's.
I rode by there yesterday and looked at it.
Okay.
And there's no erosion problem right now there.
Well, one day when Steve can go, I'll ride out there with him, maybe, if I'm able, and we'll look at it. But I expect to look after my own. That's mine, and I don't want nobody else messing with it.
Yeah.
Because I want it just like I want it.
Yeah.
And.
But you didn't have the county to come out and dig all the dirt away from your fence either, did you?
No, sir, I didn't do that because I didn't ask for it.
Okay. I didn't ask for it either, Mr. Carter. They just appeared out there one day and started digging.
Yeah, well, I haven't heard that before.
Yeah. Well, that's the truth.
Okay, anything else?
Yeah, I would just like to say at this point, Mr. Chair, and also Mr. Lee, which we pretty much like to say we took care of the issue about the fence, but if Mr. Lee still has a problem with the erosion, my suggestion would be to this commission to, a lot of public works to go, to go out there, to make an assessment, to get back with the county manager, and then give this commission a direct answer, which way we should go, because if it's something, a problem that we created, then we should try to eliminate it also if we created it, based on the letter that he has there. But we can keep going around and around about it, but the main thing is that we have a public works department, a public works director, let them go out there and assess it. I went out there, I rode out there, Mr. Lee, and looked at the situation out there with the fence and all down there, and I don't really know what it would take to, you know, fix it, you know, but the public works department, this is their field of expertise, so I think we need to, you know, defer to them.
I would think some rock would do it, and Mr. Barnard, he even mentioned that at the last meeting, and I thought they was going to move forward with that, you know, but I hadn't heard the more.
I think my comment was, if we do anything, I might push a crush and run in there. But I, just like I told you on telephone, we cannot afford to go out there and put the big old rock like they got by using funeral home. We're not going to landscape your property with that kind of stuff.
I don't want my property landscaped, Steve, and.
You suggested it.
You could afford to build an eight million dollar building here, but you can't afford a few rock. That's ridiculous.
Well.
Okay, any other questions, Mr. Lee?
I think if we, if the erosion problem starts back, I mean, we'll deal with it whenever it happens, but right now, you don't have no erosion problem going on out there.
Yeah, I think I do.
Well.
Have you walked the fence line and looked at around the post where it's washing?
Might need to let the grass grow around them.
Well, Ware County needs to put the grass there because they dug it away from it in ninety-four.
Mr. Chair, I just want to reiterate that if a lot of public works directors go out there, assess the situation, if, based on the letter that he has, if it's a problem that we created as far as the erosion or, you know, digging out the ditch, then we should try to do what we can to try to, you know, fix that problem. But other than that, I don't think anything we can do until we get something from the public works director and gets back with the county manager.
When do you think he might can do that, Mr. Burse?
I think that ASAP, I guess, you know, just try to find out, go out and assess it.
Okay.
And, because, you know, he is a tight-span citizen, and, you know, if it's a problem we created, again, then we need to try to take care of it.
Okay. Will somebody contact me back?
I'll, I'll.
Okay, all right. Okey-dokey.
All right.
You got that, Mr. Moore?
I do, yes, sir.
Next item on the agenda out of May is the Jamestown subdivision access road. Mr. Moore?
Under tab A is a cover sheet on this subject. At the August tenth, two thousand and twenty regular meeting, the commission voted to request the Jamestown community to decide amongst themselves the desired route for the access road to the Jamestown subdivision. As part of that request, it was asked that this information be brought back to the commission. Today's meeting, November the ninth, work session, we've handed out, I don't know if we have the overhead working now or not, but the two proposed routes, one is along the railroad tracks there, as we said before, outside of the CSX right-of-way, being Route A, and then Route B is to travel down Tanner Lane and travel south toward Wind Clay to connect there. Those are the two proposed routes.
Any questions for Mr. Moore?
What were that first route again?
Uh, excuse me, the first, Route A is parallel to the railroad tracks outside of railroad right-of-way, CSX right-of-way, cross there and cross over by a bridge there to cross over Kettle Creek along the, the right-of-way there outside of the right-of-way.
And the second one was the Wind Clay?
Yes, sir. The Wind Clay was to go down Tanner Lane and then turn south and connect directly onto Wind Clay.
So, we're not talking about going down the right-of-way, about CSX as the original proposal was? We're talking about the different one now, right?
Yes, sir, it's basically the same design, little bit of a change, only that we're outside the right-of-way, and we're, we're over on the other side, so to speak, on the east side of the city lift station. And so, there's, it's moved beyond there outside of, to the east side of the lift station. The diagram is there now, it's probably going to be hard to read. The parcel lines are there with the, the legal owners of what that is, and the one you're seeing there, if I'm not mistaken, that is the Route A, is it not, Brandon?
Yes, sir, that's the CSX right-of-way.
Okay.
Shown with the, the route immediately adjacent.
Do you have a corner, Brandon, where you can, where you can show where you're talking?
This is the corner. Lay the corner. Yeah, the corner. Said, lay it. This line is the CSX right-of-way line, the dash and the double dash right there, and it comes and steps back in, and it gets narrowed here along Mr. Tanner's property, and then, so as it, we're following along adjacent to the road, right-of-way, staying off the railroad right-of-way. It comes, comes back up right here, comes down, and this is the Kettle Creek crossing. This wetland area is denoted by the little green hatching here. Here's the run of Kettle Creek and the city lift station right here. And then that double, that dash, double dash line is the, there again, the railroad right-of-way property line. So, we're trying to stay just as close as we can along that railroad property line to minimize the impact to these property owners that are shown here. And so, with this route, you'll have one, two, three, that's four, Mr. Tan, Tanner again, Mr. Tanner again, and then I think that's Mr. Smith, and then I think Mr. Coward also.
Okay, and that's going down by the CSX.
Yes, sir, it's right adjacent to the railroad tracks.
Where, where is the bridge item on this?
There's two sheets with the cost estimate, and the bridge item is on the second page right here.
The bridge item is, uh.
They're on the second page of the cost estimate breakdown.
So, this is the first one, Brandon, the next one would be the Wind Clay?
Wind Clay, yes, sir. You can go down and look at that one?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
This is similar to the first option, but we tried to make the curvature a little bit better than we were here with how it goes out and around the lift station. We're trying to be a little less extreme with this option, so it swings out a little further, but you will have more of a wetland impact with this option, but it's still up there beside the railroad tracks. Here, the cost, and this is the Wind Clay option. These first items are for the roadway items, and then the second sheet shows the, the bridge cost for a total of two point four.
Okay, the two point four, that's for the, that first figure you had, is included in that, the eight twenty-five, or not eight?
Two point, two point four is for Tanner Lane Wind Clay project.
Right.
The ABC project was five point four million.
So, it's going to cost twice as much if we went?
By the railroad track.
Yeah.
This is the overall of the Wind Clay option, shows the crossing down the creek, and then begins there with actual road plans, turns off there Tanner Lane, and then crosses the creek there with the bridge, and then goes over and connects to Wind Clay on the other side.
So, out of those.
There it is, and the aerial background behind it gives you a little, little better picture of those two bodies that were discussed.
Yeah. So, other than it costing twice as much if we went the, by the track, which one is most, most impactful or less impactful?
Wind. Commissioner Barnard, did you remember the number that we looked at? In fact, the owners before the meeting.
I think Wind Clay is three property owners. You've got Neil Tanner, you've got Mr. Rainwater, you've got the Sasters over the other side of Wind Clay. Three property owners.
I, I think we have a, a no-brainer, really.
Any other questions for, um, Mr. Wallace?
One of the things I was going to mention, Brandon, correct me if I'm wrong, but on Route A, the one that's parallel to the railroad tracks, when you connect to Blaylock, if I'm not mistaken, the roadway would need, need to be further out, out, and I believe that house there on the corner, the white wood frame house, would be a total tape, if I'm not mistaken, is that, been that route?
That, that is the way I remember it, Scott. We went through this thing so many different ways. I think, is that aerial, Commissioner Moore, can you tell if that aerial shows that house?
Should be right.
Yeah. So, as you can see, that center line, line shown there actually appears to almost touch that house, so to have a lane to drive in, the house would have to be removed, so that property would be a total tape.
That's going down the ABC Avenue?
The ABC Avenue route adjacent to the railroad tracks at Blaylock, right there, the corner of Blaylock and the railroad tracks.
So, okay, if, on the Wind Clay, which I know, you know, you're not dealing with that many, doing what, three properties, I think it's it, are people be impacted by, Mr. Tanner, when he was up, he mentioned about something about his pond or something about some part of his pond might be, have taken away, or?
Yes, sir, as you can see in this aerial view, the, that proposed route goes between two existing ponds there. I don't know if you can make it.
If you had your pointer, maybe I could follow you there, but they're trying to.
Here's a, a pond down. This is the Rainwater Pond.
Uh-huh.
This is a pond, this is Mr. Tanner's pond. The roadway is actually going between those two ponds.
So, what, so what's there now?
Uh, there's just, it's just dirt, a dam, pond dam. I think by the way, the way it looks, you might have to, like Mr. Tanner was mentioning, we might have to do some filling in of those ponds with the roadway construction, depending on the elevations of how high the road will be here in comparison to what the existing grade is there now, because I'm assuming this bridge is going to be really high, and so there's going to be some grade separation from the existing grade as we approach the bridge.
So, have we considered, you know, if it does impact Mr. Tanner in that way, to compensate him for whatever his?
Yes, sir, in the, in right-of-way agreements, it's nothing, you know, we have to go and get them to agree to that right-of-way agreement. And so, during that process, any kind of issues like that can be brought out at that point and discussed.
Okay. So, again, with your pointer back there, that's where Wind Clay starts, right back here?
Over here.
Back here?
Yes, sir. This is Wind Clay Drive over here.
Okay.
Wind Clay Court, I'm not sure what.
Okay, and that's coming on across, and that's the bridge right there where the Kettle Creek?
Yes, sir, this is the run of the creek right here.
So, it's pretty much like a straight shot?
Well, yes, sir, there's a little bit of a, little bit of an angle here to come across. So, this property owner over here, the Sasser, would be impacted. Yes, sir. Along Mr. Tanner and Mr. Rainwater.
So, Mr. Sasser, there a house, it's just vacant land, or what?
Just, just a vacant land.
Okay.
This is, this line, line here delineates a wetland area, so this entire area is a wetland impact.
This agreement, right-of-way agreement with the commission several years ago, that did not give us a deed to that property?
Uh, I believe he's asking about the right-of-way agreement from Mr. Tanner's father.
Yeah, sure.
I don't think that was ever executed by the county, was it?
The minutes I found was where he wanted to extend Tanner Lane for the road name, if I'm not mistaken, based on what I read there.
Yeah.
Which would be for this portion of the roadway?
Yeah, what's considered Tanner Lane?
This, this point, this road right here is Tanner Lane.
Okay.
So, this would be where we would have a right-of-way. Any, anytime we leave this, we would have to acquire right-of-way from, from the point that we leave this existing right-of-way here.
But we would have.
So, all of this, from this point down, would all be acquisition.
Okay. So, based on that drawing, we wouldn't really even have to acquire the right-of-way back over this one Tanner Lane, was?
That's correct. All of this would be within county's right-of-way.
Okay.
On Route A, it follows parallel to the railroad track off of CSX right-of-way?
Yes, sir.
Because they don't want us on the right-of-way?
Yes, sir.
And it stops at Wakona Drive?
Um, I'd have to go back and look. That has been discussed. We discussed going on Wayton Waytonon Drive, and then we discussed terminating there at Stetson Drive.
Why not go to Wakona Drive?
Well, the expense, project expense, and having to acquire additional right-of-way and all that.
So, that would feed it into the other subdivision, Frontier Estates, right?
Well, it just, there's an existing road there.
Right.
That goes from Stetson Drive to Wakona Drive. It is narrow, and it really needs improvement.
Right.
So, the argument to do it now is you need to improve this roadway anyway. It's in bad shape, but it just increases the cost of what we're talking about doing. You'll have some power lines that are impacted, will have to be moved, and then there's a big, huge telephone cabinet right there, I think it's AT&amp;T cabinet, so all those things drive the cost of the project up. Sir?
I was, listen, I was.
Something's going on.
The chairman?
I don't know.
Okay.
Jimmy, still there?
Chairman? Sir, I'm listening.
Okay, he's still there.
And that's just nowhere.
I just made a point that it's.
No, I'm not a snorer. We, we got to make the decision.
We are.
And, and the day's the day. Everybody needs to understand, we're not building a racetrack out there, we're building a road of escape where we get ambulance and fire trucks in. We don't need a four-lane road, we need a two-lane road that needs to be restricted for the people that lives in that area, so the people in, in Frontier Estates ain't going to be harassed by people on the four-wheelers and their motorcycles and everything, drag rush and running up down that road. the people in in Frontier Estates ain't gonna be harassed by people on their four-wheelers and their motorcycles and everything, drag rusher running up down that road. So the county commission needs to put some some buy into it. If we're gonna go that way, I think that's the way, that's the way I want to go. That's my vote, is to go Wind Clay. That's the cheapest of the best. We need to get away from that railroad.
Yes, absolutely, I agree.
Have you experienced a railroad derailment? I have out there, years ago, and them cars went, slammed out into Jamestown Road, then a hundred fifty foot over there on Mr. Uh IW uh, Mr. Uh Sam Strickland's property. So, a roadside railroad track ain't really the solution, we need a way out, we need a way of escape, we need to get away from the railroad where we can get fire trucks and ambulances in that whole area. That's what I'm, that's what I'm, that's what I support.
Yeah, me too.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, any other comments? No, we'll put it on the agenda for the five o'clock meeting, is that five o'clock?
Yes, sir.
Can can I say something for your video lovers? Being I'm being back to the mother of the clock?
Five minutes.
Neil Tanner, thirty-six over one Tanner Lane.
Thank you.
Where y'all going is impossible. Y'all keep talking about building that bridge right there, but they ain't none of you been out there and watched the water flow. Steve come out there and I walked him through all of it. If you'll go into that creek and watch that water flow, you're gonna flood me. Now, if you wanna buy my whole thirty-three acres, do what you want to. Let's get you checkbook. That forty-foot bridge down there, it not gonna handle that water in that creek. I've lived there for fifty-something years now.
How long is the bridge at Kettle Creek, US One, State Street, how long is that?
Steve, you'll have to start at the back of my pond right there and go up all the way to Wind Clay nearby it to relieve that water pressure.
I'm talking about as far as the bridge on State Street, Kettle Creek, how long is that bridge?
The one inside the railroad?
No, yeah.
Side the railroad wouldn't have to be forty, fifty feet long.
I'm talking about the existing bridge on State Street, how long is that bridge now?
The one there on State Street right there, Ford Store at the Forks?
Yeah.
That's what, a sixty-foot bridge, fifty-foot bridge? A hundred and eighty feet on my property.
That option, yes, sir. This is the one down there by your house. So he's proposing a hundred and eighty-foot bridge right there.
Uh.
Well, I'd have to see it laid out before you can tell me about it, or.
Brandon of.
Sir.
We're designing our bridges for a hundred-year flood, aren't we?
Yes, sir.
I I can't see a big problem if you've got a hundred-year flood. Uh.
You can kinda see more in the aerial photo of the length of the bridge, it's that darkened area in the middle. And the a cost estimate Mr. Long's got there, it shows is that he's proposing a one hundred and eighty-foot bridge in that location, not an eighty-foot bridge.
You see that green line on the left side of that map right there?
Yes, sir, that's the wetlands line.
That's where the water comes to on my pond. My spillway dumps out about where that green line is right there. And when that creek backs up to that pond right there and it busts that dam on that pond because of y'all, Lord help you. Not not counting all this effect, everything all the way to railroad tracks when you put that, when you dam it up. Because that's basically what you're doing, is damming it up from Wind Clay all the way down that creek, that's a that's a seventy-foot drop, if not a hundred-foot drop off of Wind Clay.
How are you?
So you're building a dam, you're building, they ain't no telling how much dirt it'll take you to drop off of Wind Clay and come down to that creek.
Mr. Tanner, how are we?
Sir?
How are we damming it up with a hundred and eighty-foot bridge?
That hundred and eighty foot ain't gonna take up that whole creek. I'm telling y'all, when you get down there and look at the water coming through there, and you've experienced it like I have.
Yeah.
Y'all've got a job.
Well, I've.
And everybody in Jamestown, here's a petition right here, thirty-something names on it, and we all kinda backed off of this because when y'all had your little meeting last time, y'all spent two hundred and seventy thousand dollars doing bore tests and everything, you haven't even done bore test down there by my house. So when you, now you've got to go back and spend another chunk of money doing bore test in that creek right there to see if you can find the bottom to put your dang anchors in.
Well, you have to, you have to buy the the uh permit from the core, which we have, but it'll have to be renewed. And uh once we renew it, I don't know how much that'll cost. But uh I I've been in this kind of business a long time. And I've never had but one or two places in sixty years that we really had a problem. And that was when we had a hurricane. Uh, I don't know if you remember the hurricane of uh of nineteen sixty-four. What was the name of that thing?
Door.
Door. And uh, other than that one, around here, we didn't, we've never had a real serious hurricane. Now, we've had a lot of water, but we've not had a serious hurricane other than Door. And that was in September nineteen sixty-four. Uh, we didn't wash no bridges out. Uh, we've had some bridges washed out. That was not uh properly designed. That was not designed properly for a simple reason. They wanted to do it with less money. And that's all, we ain't not after doing it with less money, we have to do it right.
Well, the only, what the right way is to go outside the railroad, that's what everybody has voted on for the last three or four years, every time they've had the church meeting out there.
They voted on.
We had all the engineers out there and the railroad out there, everybody in that church raised their hand to go down inside the railroad. That's where everybody's talked about this for I don't know how many years now. And y'all keep changing it, we'll go back to Tanner's Lane and dump all that traffic into Wind Clay, and you haven't, none of you, have any of you went and talked to Wind Clay? Anybody went and talked to uh Frontier Estates?
Yeah.
Y'all have? Have y'all told them people the impact of the traffic that's gonna be there? No. Mr. Strickland gave y'all two hundred named petition, I think, at one of the last meetings
Uh huh.
or meeting before, of people that didn't want it dumped on Wind Clay. You go onto Wind Clay, you got to take a left, stop, take a right, go up the hill, stop, take a right, go to the next stop sign, take a left before you even get to Wakona. You got to do three to four stops before you can even get to Wakona. If you go upside the railroad tracks, you ain't got no stop.
But then you go.
That lift station sitting right there, that thing's forty-something years old, it's time for it to be redone. Mr. Thrift right there, he he said something about redoing it. Why not redo it, rebuild it, set it over a little bit and shoot a straight shot there, there's already a line there, there's already a paved road there that I believe the county put there, me and Steve rode down it. There's already telephone poles there, so there's a right-of-way there.
Okay, is that, is that it? Need to move on?
Yeah, yeah. I reckon so, Jerry, cause it don't look like any of it's doing any good.
Thank you. Okay.
I'm Steve Strickland, I live in Frontier Estates, I live right on that side of the green line. All this traffic you can turn through there, all the, y'all have, top of them people that live on Wind Clay that's got kids riding bicycles, everything else out there in the street that you'll turn all this traffic through. And if you think a fire truck is on get down Wakona Drive across the creek to Jamestown, when the train's up there, you dead wrong. It took, I had to go around my elbow to get to this meeting, cause it was blocked, Wakona was blocked out with traffic. And now, if y'all ain't gonna do something at Wakona, four-lane it, make it wider, turn lane, something, you ain't solved nothing. Cause you won't get right there and it's gonna be a bottleneck. The way I said, you need to, and like you said, we had a petition, everybody voted in that meeting to go down side the railroad track. And that's the way, and next question, what, how much money we got in the splotch to build this project? Anybody know?
Eight roads?
Huh?
Five million dollars.
You got the money to go down there, you said it's a five-million-dollar project, you got the money to do it.
They told you on last last week, we had, I mean, all loaded, it's a six-million-dollar project, they all agreed to do it. And now y'all come back and rebapt it again. Y'all spent more money rebapt than paying the engineers than than the dang road you worked.
Neil's right, my property backs up to Kettle Creek right there. There's water up to the bottom of the hill at my house. When we have a heavy rain, we had no hurricane, we just had some heavy rain. You won't get wet right there, somebody is.
Every time y'all dig a ditch, y'all hear about a car, or open up a drain or lock any avenue, all that pussy water comes in out of it.
Okay, anybody else?
To people that do the vote for y'all. Before you did too much.
Anybody else have any comments, open the floor?
Yeah, there is. My name is Michael Smith, I live on Wind Clay Drive. And my son is Bradley Smith, who the option A next to the railroad tracks would impact, I know we've mentioned, I've heard mentioned how many people property would be impacted. His would be impacted right at forty percent. I don't think anyone else's would be impacted that much if you chose option A. Also, I have grandchildren that if that route were to be used on Route A next to the railroad tracks coming across his property, would endanger my grandchildren severely, it would be so close to where their home would be. Another thing, I've lived out there since nineteen eighty-six, I don't know how long Steve's lived out there, probably the same amount of time.
Same yourself.
And when we moved out there, it was clay roads, glad to see the gravel put down so we could get up and down that hill on uh Stetson without spinning along ABC. And it is a narrow road, but when people, if the route, Wind Clay, is used, and that's what I'm in favor of, you can go left or right when you get to Stetson. And I really feel like, I've heard said here already today, this would not be a thoroughfare like it would be if it were along the railroad tracks. Yes, this road would be here for emergency, people to get in and out, of course, people living in Jamestown, it would be a shorter route for them to get in and out. And and all of us need the overpass on State Street up here on US One for everybody on the east and west side of railroad tracks. And we all know that, and I feel like, from what I've heard, that's coming. Uh, whenever there's a train blocking on Wakona, and I've had to experience it too, coming home, uh having to go quarter Z to get to my house, it's uh, that's not going to change whether you use Route A or Route B, cause you have the same problem. So that's really not relevant to what we're talking about here. The overpass on State Street would alleviate that problem. But, so I would, I would uh ask you to really consider using Route B on Wind Clay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Yeah, I'd just like, just something for the record. It was mentioned about the uh ABC Avenue and about side the railroad track, and that was the original plan, the original ride, and it was the original ride, but what happened was CSX basically told us, hey, you can't use our right-of-way, so that pretty much killed that right there. So I just want.
Yep.
I just want to state that for the record, my understanding is that CSX basically say you can't come down the right-of-way, so.
If you're gonna continue all the way north to Jordan Steed?
The what now?
Are you gonna continue that route all the way down to Jordan Steed, like y'all originally know?
I don't know anything about that, but I'm.
The first original plan, y'all are gonna start from that very first, and then we're gonna get in a problem.
Uh.
But, y'all see, James and Best are on there to deal with. Y'all been to them, and talked to them, and I think they're up there beginning.
No.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Barson.
My underst- my understanding, like I said, I wanted to state that for clarification, that uh CSX is the one that pretty much shot that out the uh, you know, decision-making part as far as uh escape ride. My understanding is that this goes back to whenever this commission years ago promised the people about an escape ride or something to get out there, and I think Mr. Smith alluded to it earlier, that really, this is not so much for when the trains are blocking right there on Wakona or whatever to get you back on State Street, but it's for the people that's in Jamestown, if something happened, they could come out of there and get back if they had to go to the hospital or whatever, have a way to get from that thing, but right now, they're pretty much boxed in. So, you know, we 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 faced with two options here, uh the uh ABC Avenue cutting across, going down Hill Station, or the Wind Clay. And the recommendation right now of the uh county engineer, based on cost estimates and what's most, less impactful is that it's be like twice as much to go down the ABC Avenue route versus going to Wind Clay. And uh as far as the the traffic, nobody, if we had a crystal ball, we could tell you how many cars, but we don't know that. But I think it's just more or less, right now, it's gonna be an escape ride, and the people that's used to going to their homes to Jamestown or State Street and crossing over, I don't, I don't really foresee them using that because it's not gonna really save them any time to go that way.
Whatever you're gonna do, that's right. We're gonna follow that pair of play, jumping, is gonna find a way across that, the trains are blocked, so they're even gonna use Wind Clay.
Use the ball, fix that.
Jumping, finding two good changes down to Blaylock over there in our area, or they're gonna go down inside the railroad.
Yep.
They go down side the railroad tracks, and y'all build it all the way to Jordan, then they can go all the way down to Jordan, jump up into Jamestown, let's go to Pebble Hill, or turn and go to the uh Panzer, and go all the way to US One.
Yep.
Okay, is that your comments, Mr. Barson?
That's it, that's it.
All right, we've already moved it to the agenda, correct? Mr. Moore? Okay, we'll move on to the next item, um item B, employee safety incentive pay, Mr. Moore?
Uh, Mr. This is a request. Uh, for an approval to, uh as we do annually, um based on our safety history uh with our workers' comp claims to uh to offer an incentive pay to employees for full-time and part-time. Uh, this is typically done uh because of our uh lower uh number of claims and our safety incentive discounts from the uh local government risk management services. Uh, the total amount would be forty-eight thousand dollars, and that is a hundred and twenty-five dollars for full-time and sixty-five dollars for part-time.
This is, excuse me, this is basically an incentive for employees not to get hurt, right?
Yes, sir, it's it's a safety incentive, kinda like what most uh most companies pay, yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman.
Does, how does this tie into the workman's comp insurance?
Uh, the, because the number of claims that we have, uh we have a safety committee that works on those issues to try to reduce the amount of claims and those kind of things, so it's an incentive that's paid back by the by the insurance company.
Any questions for Mr. Moore?
Uh, not Mr. Moore, but maybe Miss Harold, our finance person, could you come and just basically kinda give a synopsis of how much this really saves the county as far as on our insurance versus, you know, what we're paying out?
We can look at our workers' comp premiums, we have to pay according to, each each different department has different amounts, you know, firefighters pay an amount, administrative people are a less amount, we even pay workers' comp on all the elected officials. So, when our safety committee gets together with the LGRMS, and they offer these programs like driving for the sheriff's office, they'll come do classes and we get discounts on our insurance premiums. And I know it says about, it's about forty-eight thousand dollars what this would cost us to give it to the employees, but if you look at the overall savings for the workers' comp, the claims, we don't have the claims that used to drive our premiums up, and it was well in excess of forty-eight thousand dollars.
So the lack of claims will pay this incentive?
Yes.
Thank you.
How many claims we have last?
One accident could could take that forty-eight thousand dollars off.
Yeah, that's true.
Just one employee get hurt.
Okay. Um.
How many claims did we have last year, working comp claims?
I can't tell you right off the top of my head. I don't even have a clue.
I'm trying to remember.
I'd have to go back and look, I can't remember everything.
Yeah, maybe uh, do you know roughly how many full-time, how many part-time employees we have, or maybe Miss Bailey, one of y'all could tell me?
Miss Bailey? Yeah. Um, I don't know the count off the top of my head, but that's where that forty-eight thousand dollars toll comes from, from the number of employees that we're actually gonna pay that out to.
Okay, so you don't have like a rough estimate, just how many brothers?
Um, I wanna say three hundred full-time, a hundred part-time.
Okay.
About right there.
Okay.
If you can have that information in the five o'clock meeting for Mr. Barson, thank you. Any other questions?
And it's already been budgeted, right?
Yes, sir.
No more questions, agenda? Mr. Moore, agenda, five o'clock?
Yes, sir.
Next item, let's see, the next three items are resolutions. Item C is appointment to the Ware County Board of Assessors. Mr. Moore?
Okay, uh, under tab C for, for two individuals is resolution twenty twenty-nine, nineteen and twenty twenty-two. Uh, it is to reappoint two individuals, Jacob Strickland and Lee Robertson, to the Ware County Board of Assessors. Uh, both individuals have expressed their desire to be reappointed and their letters are attached.
Commissioners, any questions? I'll be of favor.
Yep.
Anybody else?
Yes, me too.
Agenda item?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes, sir.
Next is a resolution, appointment to the Ware Okeechobee Regional Library System Board.
Yes, sir. Um, under tab D is resolution twenty twenty-two-one and resolution twenty twenty-two. Um, these are two resolutions. One is to appoint Mr. David or Andy Wall uh, to the Okeechobee Regional Library System Board of Trustees. And the second one there is blank. It is for ex officio member, and I believe Commissioner Carter served in that capacity. I didn't know if he might want to continue to serve. It expired actually last year, I think. So they're asking for, for it to be renewed if, if he so desired to.
I had rather, uh, someone else do that for the simple reason, uh, we don't have our meetings where we can have, we can meet with them. Every time we have a county commission meeting, they have a library board meeting. And so it is a big conflict. And therefore, I, I would tender my resignation if it's adequate to, to do so at this time. And let's appoint someone. We may have someone in this, in this room that, uh.
Has to be an ex officio member. Mr. Burris, you willing to volunteer for that?
Not really, but.
Yeah, but you just got recruited? You got recruited, just?
I'm an insurance company. Well, he, he would be in the same condition that I was in because.
We get that changed.
Can we give, is a happy ex officio?
Yep, it's that, it's that seat for the ex officio.
Board member.
Yep.
Maybe that's something we can revisit the next meeting between that and the next meeting.
Yeah, you might cut your mind right quick.
No, I'm not talking about the five o'clock meeting today.
Okay, um, and I guess I'm fine with appointing Mr. Wall if y'all are.
Okay.
Uh, the next item is resolution to authorize Georgia Department of Transportation transit grant application. Mr. Moore?
Yes, sir. Uh, this is resolution twenty twenty-two-three. Uh, it's a resolution authorizing the filing of an application with Georgia DOT and the United States Department of Transportation for a grant for public transportation assistance. Uh, there is a, um, there's a resolution attached. Um, it's not in the format we'd normally go with, but I went ahead and numbered it. But it just authorizes for us to apply for those, for that grant.
Is this the same grant that we had before that first little buses were in?
Mm-hmm, yes, sir.
The one that had it before, did they stop running in Ware County?
Uh, not that I'm aware of. Do you know of anybody? I don't think so. No, Mids is still doing it. Yeah, they're still doing it.
I know there are a lot of changes with COVID, but they are.
So this has been an extension of the existing contract, our resolution?
Yeah, it's for us to renew that grant, so we have to apply each and every year. Yes, sir. No, sir.
Put it on the agenda, Mr. Moore?
Okay.
The next is a, um, SPOSS Plan of Action. Um, I've talked to Mr. Moore at length about this. Um, you want to explain what you want to?
Yes, sir. Um, with the failure of the twenty twenty-one SPOSS referendum, uh, we, the Ware County's gonna have to develop a plan of action on how we're going to, uh, make up for these funds. This is a substantial part of the Ware County budget. And for any capital outlay, not, you know, not just equipment, but repairs, upgrades, um, replacing roofs, fixing roofs, air conditions, you name it. This capital outlay comes out of that budget. Now that the general fund is going to absorb all that cost, which amounts to about three point two million dollars a year, roughly, if I think, if I believe correctly. Yeah, so somehow or another, we've got to come up with a game plan to make that up. Um, and so, for instance, uh, give you an idea of what I mean by that. We, we had the opportunity to apply for a CDBG to, to get seven hundred fifty thousand dollars to do street paving. Well, the one we were gonna plan to do for twenty twenty-one was all matched by SPOSS. And now that there's just a handful of that money left to do street paving, uh, we may have to forfeit that grant.
So how much would the county portion, we didn't want to match?
Uh, paving six roads, curb and gutter is about one point six million.
That would have come from SPOSS.
Our part would come from SPOSS. The seven hundred fifty thousand, which was, so to speak, free money, as long as you buy by the rules, is, would go a long way in that contract. So, I mean, I'm, I'm in contact now with Regional Commission and we're gonna have to make a decision once we get, um, to the point of what I'm gonna recommend, that we come up with a committee, more of a task force, to figure out what things we can do, what we can't do, what we're gonna have to get rid of. Um, you know, it's, uh, anything's on the table at this point, so.
I guess, now that's where you say we got to do a lot of belt tightening and come up with creative ways.
Yeah.
Generate revenue.
Yeah.
Didn't the tax minister inform us last meeting that there was about five mils that the SPOSS tax was subsidizing the general fund?
Yes, sir.
Won't be there now?
That's correct. It would go, it would go from, I think, fifteen point two four zero to twenty point eight, I think, something like that.
I think so. Mr. Chairman, go ahead.
It's a shame that people in the city elected Wakeona past SPOSS. And the people in the county voted against it. And look, and look what we voted against. We're talking about it right now. In other words, we don't need that penny no more. Just raise our, just raise our, uh, our taxes, our property taxes. And that don't give people, that just don't give. We have, we've had it since nineteen eighty-four, I believe it is. People have always voted in. This time, we had a crowd that said, we don't want that no more. They didn't ask why we don't want, why, why would you not want? Well, they could have been up here at this meeting today, they could have just heard it. And I'll hush.
No, that's fine. Any other comments? I've talked, I said, I talked to Mr. Moore about this and I, I volunteered to be on his committee. Um, another volunteer would be two of us. It can't be three. Mr. Barnard? Okay, it's two, two.
All right.
All right, we don't, we don't need to vote on that. We'll just.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, the next item would be commissioners' items. Commissioner Burris? Mr. Barnard? Mr. Carter?
Other than the, uh, road out there, I'm okay, but I, I want to see some dirt being turned out there. Uh, to give access to those people uh, in case of fire or in case of an ambulance.
Right.
And, uh, I, I don't think that we can get that road quick enough.
Thank you.
I'd hate mighty bad for another person to be, uh, or another person to die waiting on one of those things. And I pray that it won't happen. And I also pray that we might make the right decision in whatever we do. I know that we said that we promised this, we said that we, that we promised that. But it's finally up to the county commission of any county in the state of Georgia to have to make the decision of what road is paved and how it's paved. And I trust that we will be making the right decision and it, and it will be led in that direction. Uh, God bless each one of you for coming and I pray that you have a wonderful evening.
Thank you, Commissioner. Mr. Chairman, you got any comments?
Yes, sir. I was just reminiscing, uh, again about SPOSS uh, and so many projects that's, uh, gonna be, gonna fall by the wayside now, but here we are with recreation. With a wonderful recreation complex. Uh, we're gonna build a field for our handicapped children that, that got shot. Roadworks, repairs, paving, heavy equipment, motor graders, got eight other people, ambulances. Got five fire trucks, city and county communications systems updated. Nine, nine-one-one sun router, updates on all of our, uh, equipment. The ambulances and the fire trucks and the patrol cars, all the communications, internal communications. All this is gonna let pay us now. And the people that voted against it needs to think about it. Where are we going, are we gonna just do it now? You let, you let, you let an ambulance not get where it's supposed to go and somebody's gonna overlook how come? Nine hundred six square miles of Ware County, two hundred sixty miles of paved streets have got to be maintained. Four hundred seventy-five miles of dirt routes, four hundred seventy-five miles of, of ditches down one side, four hundred seventy-five miles of ditches down the other side. Plus thousands of, uh, toll types. All that, majority, a lot of funded out of, um, SPOSS. Seven hundred thousand plus dollars of money people. That's too much money for one little team. People said, I ain't vote for that team. And whatever, forty-five percent of it comes from people outside of Ware County coming in here by. So we really shot ourselves in the foot. Bad. And yes, I'm upset about it. You better believe it. Because the people that we serve is the ones that's gonna get hurt. And I'll hush.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, I'm personally concerned about the city residents that Commissioner Burris and I represent. I mean, they, they, they really need the SPOSS money. And we're gonna look at, see if we can equalize what they're losing. They, they wanted it, the county didn't. So Commissioner Burris and I are gonna work on that some.
That's the shining, that's the crying chain.
All right, county man, draw items. Madam Attorney?
I don't have anything. Thank you, sir.
Okay, we need a motion to adjourn.
So movement, Jeff.
Motion in a second. I'll invite a vote aye. We're adjourned until five o'clock. Thank, thank everybody.